So Chairman Colby has asked me to run the meeting tonight. He can't stay for the whole meeting. He has a work commitment later on. So I'll entertain a motion to open.
Motion open.
Do you have a second?
Second.
JR Colby?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy? She's muted. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Hello?
Hi.
Okay.
We can hear you now.
Okay, yes.
So this is Alicia Greco, Vice Chair of the Newbury Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. JR Colby?
Yes.
Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Tracy Blazeton Administrator?
Yes.
Julie O'Brien, Executive Administrator?
Yes.
Martha Taylor, Planning Director?
Yes.
John Lucy, Chief of Police?
Yes.
We have some anticipated speakers on the agenda tonight. Please respond in the affirmative. Paolo Safler from National Grid?
Yes.
TJ Melvin from Millennium Engineering?
Yeah.
Tim Snay, Ransom Consulting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Newbury Select Board is being conducted virtually consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, in the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. The order, which you can find posted on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Select Board is convening by Zoom. Meeting link is posted on the agenda on the town's website. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the website. And we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on the website. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you. And be sure to state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. The chairperson or vice chairperson will afford the public comment for a period of three minutes. It will be granted as follows. Participation will be sought through the raise hand function. One, for video conference participants, this function can be accessed by clicking on the Participants option listed at the menu below the photo gallery. Hover your cursor in this area if you don't see it. A participants window will open and display on the right. On the bottom of this participant area, you will see the list of phone video participants. And on the bottom, you will see the ability to click on a button to raise hand. Please ensure your name is displayed. You may rename by using the more function next to your name. Telephone participants can use their phone keypad while in the Zoom meeting to raise hand by hitting star nine. Those who have requested to be heard through the raise hand function will be heard in the order which they are listed. System lists in order by whom hit the raise hand function first. Please identify yourself by stating your name and address, then your question or comment. You'll be unmuted and your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. We will continue down the list of those in the raise hand column. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So the first thing we have is on the agenda is oral communications from citizens. To receive oral communications from the members of the public, members of the public may address the select board for up to three minutes, longer with the permission of the chairperson. The select board will not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes unless extended at the direction of the chair. Do we have any raise hand functions? Anybody raising their hand?
Chairperson Mary Anastasio has raised her hand.
Okay. Can you unmute her, please? Hi, Mary. So we're going to, just so you know, there's up to three minutes. So I'm gonna just time you and I'll give you, if you're still going, I'll give you a warning so you can wrap up.
No problem.
All right, thank you.
I will try to be as concise as possible. So, thank you so much on behalf of my husband, my son, and I, and some parents that share the concerns at Triton for in-person learning. I appreciate you having us on the agenda for this evening. I live in Byfield section, so I just wanted to share that with you all. And thank you so much to the Board of Selectmen, Chair Colby, and yourself for hosting this evening. I did send a letter a couple of weeks ago stating that Triton had been in person for a total of six days. Happily, we are back in the hybrid mode and we've been in-person learning for a total of four since January 25th. In a hybrid model, our children are only in school two days a week. I wanted to bring that to your attention to see the impact to this community and also to the future. Part of the impact to this community is attrition. There are parents that are leaving this community to pursue other educational alternatives, such as private schools and homeschool. And that will impact the Triton's budget and the share that the town of Newbury will have to take on to support the organization of the regional schools. We conducted a survey, a group of parents that I'm a part of, and 34% of the parents that we surveyed have already left the Triton regional family. I'm very concerned about the costs that will impact Newbury. Also, in Triton, the tentative budget for the upcoming year is published. It is a tentative, it's the high watermark, but it's impactful. And I encourage this board, in the select board, to review it, to see the type of impact that will directly affect Newbury. I also wanted to talk about the failure rate at the Triton High School, of which my son's a part of, was 200% in the first quarter. The second quarter just closed and that rate has not been published. But I'm very concerned about what impact that would do to the community for sales, for homes, for our tax base as families migrate in and out. What is the draw, other than a beautiful community, if the school system is something that they have to incur an extra cost for?
30 seconds.
Okay. So what I would like the school board, the select board, to do is to protect the taxpayers' investment in our public education. And I would like you to provide encouragement to the existing school committee to define and craft a plan to bring all children back to in-person learning by March 15th. We are Triton and we are part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Tracy?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, we have Dan Emerson.
Okay. Dan? Can you speak?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Hi, my name is Dan Emerson. I'm also a resident of Byfield. Thank you to the select board for opening up this time to talk. I just wanted to share my perspective on the, you know, considered work that the school committee has done so far. Like, we can all recognize that there are no good solutions to the problems that we have right now. But I know there are many differing opinions, many different perspectives. Early on in all of this process, I had shared my family's experience that the remote options were working well for us. And we've come to learn so many families in our community haven't enjoyed the same experience that, you know, between students suffering, families suffering. You know, there's clearly an awful lot to this story, a lot of different viewpoints. But I simply wanted to share that I believe that the school committee, as elected by our townspeople, have done a great job in trying to service all of the needs of the town, both trying to make a safe educational environment and trying to take the greater community's needs in mind as well. There was no easy answer. There still are no easy answers. And I just, I would like the select board to know that there are many of us out here who are in support of the school committee and their efforts to take all perspectives in and deliver the best educational experience and the safest community that can be offered. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Tracy?
Yes, Sarah Clifford.
Hi, Sarah, can you take yourself off mute?
I sure can.
There you go. Three minutes.
Thank you very much. I'm Sarah Clifford and I've been a resident of the town for over about 42 years. I'm ashamed to admit.
That's a good thing.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of throw a few questions out there. I'm not here to attack anyone. I'm not here to, you know, provide my opinion on, you know, the school committee and any of their decisions, you know, to date. However, I just want to kind of pose a few questions to the board. You know, we all have a job to do, just like you guys have a job to do. You have a process and you have procedures and protocols that you guys have to follow. And I do admit that I watch your meetings religiously.
Thank you.
And you guys, and you guys do follow the process and the procedures. The school committee also has processes and procedures that they need to follow. And part of their powers and duties is that, you know, they must follow the state law and they must, you know, perform their duties as mandated by the state law. And part of their duties is, you know, to, their responsibility and their right is to determine policies and practices for the students in, you know, the regional district. My concern is the town of Newbury itself and in our elected members of the school committee. I see them struggling. I see that, you know, they need support. And I just, I'd like to know if there is support that the board can look into, you know, to provide them. I know you guys have access to town council. I wondered, do they have access to town council? I don't know. You know, there's a lot of questions that are being asked of them and there are a lot of situations that they're navigating that they've never done before. I know as an educator myself, this is an extremely challenging time as a parent and as a professional. However, I have a job to do. I know which resources I can access. I just want to know if they have the same resources available to them that other, you know, elected officials have available to them. And if not, can we provide it to them to help them make decisions around the education, the proper education, which is part of their role as an elected official? It's proper education and I feel like their vision, and understandably so, their vision has been kind of, you know, it's tunnel vision right now. And they are looking out for the safety of the residents and our students and our families. However, we also have to consider proper education for our students, particularly the Newbury Elementary and the Newbury students.
You have 10 seconds.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Before I go on to the next person, I just want to kind of answer her question because I know the answer. Triton is a separate municipality from the three towns. They do have their own town, they do have their own council. They separately, they separately contract with council. And I'm sure the superintendent would be more than happy to answer any questions that you have regarding who their council is. I'm not sure who that is, but that would not fall under the purview of the town of Newbury. So Tracy, anyone else?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay. Seeing none, I'm gonna move on into the agenda. And actually, I'm gonna jump around the agenda a bit. So permit me to just suspend the order for a minute. I want to move the discussion around the Triton Remote Learning Model forward on the agenda.
Excuse me. Do we have to, it's 7:15, do we have to start the public hearing?
Yes, we do. Thank you very much, Julie.
You're welcome.
So I'm gonna hold that and we're gonna move to the
Public hearing.
Public hearing for the poll. So residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Select Board will hold an online virtual public hearing via Zoom on the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid in Verizon, New England, Inc., Plan Number 3028451, which requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. High Road, National Grid, to relocate one J zero, a J O, pole number 80 on High Road at the intersection of Old Pine Island Road, 10 feet south. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed with the town of Newbury and marked High Road, Newbury, Massachusetts. Also, for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. All persons, all persons interested or wishing to be heard are invited to participate in the meeting remotely from their computer, tablet, or smartphone meeting ID 86938361482, passcode 264709, or by telephone by calling 1-929-205-6099 US and using meeting ID 86938361482, or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel 9 or at www.tncTV.org. It's published in the Newbury Port Daily News once on Monday, January 25th, 2021. So now that this has been opened, I know I saw Paolo.
Have we made a voted opening?
Mike, make a motion. Do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, motion to open the meeting.
The public hearing.
I'll second that.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jeffrey Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby?
Chair is muted.
Yes.
Okay. So that's been opened. Is there anyone from the public would like to speak in regard to this moving of this poll? Any residents?
Madam Chairwoman, Jim Moran would like to speak.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can now, Jim. How are you?
Good, how are you tonight?
I'm good, thank you.
On the letter, the correspondence that came in, there was one letter from Mary and Vincent. Are you gonna be addressing those letters tonight? That would be my question to you, that makes them up a little later. And also on the discussions around Triton and that the town is spending $10 million out of its budget, I would certainly think the town would want to take an active participation with what's going on here in the schools at this time.
He doesn't realize.
Okay, Jim, Jim, the public comment's over. Did you have any comments about this telephone poll on High Road?
Oh, say again?
The telephone, moving the telephone poll on High Road? That's what this public hearing is?
Excuse me.
Do you have any comments on that?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there anyone else, Tracy?
I do not see anyone else. Does Mr.?
Yes. So we have Mr. Paolo Safler here from National Grid. Would you like to describe, please, sir, what your intent to do with the poll is?
Yes, thank you for letting me speak. For the Board of Selectmen, we received a customer request from the resident owner of 186 High Road in Newbury. They are building a new home and the existing pole number 80 is in the middle of their proposed driveway to their garage. So they had requested us to relocate the pole about 10 feet in the southerly direction so that the pole will be out of their way for their new driveway. And that pole will be relocated about 10 feet and then National Grid along with Verizon and other utilities such as cable will also be relocated from the existing pole to the new pole location. So that is the scope of the work. And if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna go through my board members and see if they have any questions. Jeff Walker, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, to me, it's, it's still on the existing property so it doesn't seem to create any, you know, complications.
Mike, do you have any questions?
I'm all set right now, thank you.
Jerry?
No, I'm good.
JR?
None at this time.
Okay, so hearing none and seeing no other comment. Tracy, correct? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
We get to approve the petition.
Approve the petition?
Don't we close the media, the public hearing first and then approve it, or the other way around?
No, I think we need to have the petition approved.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the petition?
Motion to approve the petition as read.
Second.
All in favor, Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
And JR Colby?
Yes.
So now could I, Alicia Greco, yes. So now could I also ask that the board vote to have the vice chair sign the petition?
Have the vice chair sign the petition?
Second that.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
JR Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Okay, now can I have?
Motion to close the.
Second.
All in favor, Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
And JR Colby?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move to another public hearing. This is the water supply.
Protection.
Yes. So could I? This is a continuation of the public, of the public hearing? So could I?
Motion to open the public hearing?
Continuance, thank you. And is there a second?
I can.
Okay, Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
JR Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. I'd like to invite the applicant or the engineer to present any new informations or revisions to the plan. So I see TJ Melvin and Tim Snay on. Who wants to speak, if anyone?
I will start. My name's TJ Melvin with Millennium Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. As you mentioned, Tim Snay from Ransom Consulting is also on as well. So since the last hearing that we had with the planning board, we have, we haven't made any revisions to the plan yet. The planning board's peer review engineer had a couple minor comments as far as some tweaks to a detail and they're requesting a test fit before we go to construction. As far as the third-party review, I believe the board may have seen the third-party review that was conducted by Newbury Port.
Yes.
They ultimately really didn't have any issues. Suggested that we line utilities with filter fabric and clean material. And actually, this morning, I got an email from DPS with just a couple tweaks to where the hydrant location was. It sounds like they're gonna be signing off. And Newbury Port Planning Board will be holding a meeting next week. So there really haven't been many changes since the last time we were here. But we're willing to throw up the plans and answer any questions the board may have. Or, as I mentioned, Tim can also answer any questions regarding the hazardous materials.
Thank you. My board, does anyone have any comments or questions about what's been presented so far, about the project in general or anything specific? Who wants to go first?
Would you like to see the plans? Would that be helpful?
That might be helpful. Can you throw the plans up, please, Martha?
TJ's got them. I will, let's see, he needs to hold on just a sec. I'm not seeing the ability to make him a co-host.
Can he share without being a co-host?
I just made him a co-host, Martha. Okay, all right, thank you. Now, Dan.
This is probably the best overview of the project. Then I can change to any sheet if the board wants to see something different.
Jeff, did you have a question that you wanted to ask?
I've kind of been going around just a little bit about, you know, I was around for the 92 fire. I mean, it was a bad fire and I know time has mitigated a lot of problems and certainly all the, you know, tremendous amount of labor that they've done to clean the site up. And I tried to distill my questions because I'm just worried about stormwater, you know, remobilizing certain things that I guess are really becoming more and more benign and the fact that the, you know, the site would be paved and the roofs and parking lot would be mitigated into a rain garden. So I guess the best question and might be for Tim would be, and I'm gonna just read it, you know, I guess the quickest way for me to be relieved, because we're, you know, custodians of the fresh water, are the rain gardens releasing stormwater into still contaminated soils that will be then released into our wetlands? Are the soils that the rain gardens are gonna be constructed over are those soils that were changed out with clean soils?
So what I understand is, I do understand that there'll be some raising of the grades across parts of the site. And so that would require some importation of clean materials. And so if the rain gardens were installed and those kinds of materials, there'd be really nothing to mobilize. And what I've observed thus far, the most of the, what remains as far as soil contamination is at or coincident with the existing groundwater table. So I don't know that by having a rain garden that we'd have infiltration of rainwater precipitation that would mobilize contaminants and soils above the water table. Because to the best of my knowledge, most of the contamination is coincident with the groundwater table. And the greater where the, where the chlorinated solvent or chlorinated ball to get into compounds are in groundwater is basically the southwestern corner of the property. So the upland portions are, you know, there's not much there in terms of chlorinated ball to get into compounds. Most of those are in the southwestern corner of the site. And they tend to be, they're at a deeper depth there, so they're not in the shallow soils above the water table. So I don't, I don't envision these rain gardens. So I don't, I don't envision these rain gardens, you know, causing or exacerbating current conditions. I would also think that where there are some areas where there's some residual petroleum contamination from some of the former underground storage tanks, that by introducing sort of aerated water into the subsurface via the rain gardens, you're gonna enhance the natural biodegradation of those petroleum hydrocarbons. Petroleum hydrocarbons break down in the presence of oxygen with naturally occurring bacteria. And by introducing sort of precipitation through a rain garden, rain garden, that's gonna be oxygenated ground, oxygenating the water that precipitates through the, through the soils, enhancing the intrinsic bacteria to break down further any residual petroleum. So I don't see the rain gardens being anything but a benefit, in my opinion.
I mean, coming from the golf industry, I certainly, you know, understand bacteria and, and what it does. So is the rain gardens going to be the only better management practices on the site? So they're gonna handle quite a bit of, of volume of water?
That's TJ, yeah.
Yep, sorry. So as far as basins and storage of water, yes, it is the only thing that is gonna be collecting the water. We do have two contact CDS units as pre-treatment to remove any solids. But as far as actual storage and infiltration of water, yeah, that is the only.
All right, because that, I mean, I know when we were involved, for instance, in our police station, we had to take, you know, and store water before we released it to the wetlands. So that was my questions. As long as, you know, Concom and the planning board have got a pretty good feel for that, that part of it, I guess, I'm the least of, you know, you're worried. So, but that was my concerns.
Thank you. Selectman Doyle, do you have any questions?
The only thing I'm really concerned about is, it came to my attention this week, I talked to Chairman Colby about, there seems to be a number of autoimmune disease, with people with autoimmune disease and strange cancers within a mile radius of that site now. And like I says, and it's, it's, I haven't had a chance to like go and keep, but it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of weird diseases happening in the area. And I'm just concerned if what the waters, if we disrupt this site again, are we gonna, are we gonna make things worse? And I think, and I don't know if Jeff has any, knows any history of it, you know, what happened. I was here for the fire too, but I wasn't on the board back then and I'm not sure if anyone's done any studies to find out how many people got sick, okay, in the area. That's all, that's, it's, it's a huge concern, but I'm just like, I'm not sure if this project is gonna unravel.
So we have Tim Snay from Ransom Consulting here. Tim, can you respond to?
Yeah, that's a tough, yeah, that's a tough question, because that's really gets into sort of, I know the Mass Department of Public Health does their annual sort of view of cancer and other diseases across the Commonwealth, you know, looking for areas where there might be hotspots or clusters of particular types of cancers. And I'm not gonna pretend to be an epidemiologist, so I can't really opine much on that. But it's really more of a global macro scale view that Department of Public Health takes when they look at sort of cancer and disease incidents across the Commonwealth. So I don't know, you know, they could, you know, I'm not questioning Mr. Doyle's comments, it could be a cluster of issues in that part of the town, but I can't comment on it because I just haven't, haven't looked at it. And it's really not my background in terms of epidemiologically, epidemiology or the study of sort of disease in, in humans. It's like, I can't really comment further.
So Tim, real quickly, is it disturb, if there was a problem there, okay, if disturbing the site, is it gonna, is it gonna wake up the ugly dragon again?
I don't, yeah, I don't think so. I mean, I look at sort of, sort of causality between disease and the environment as being one of exposure. So really, if, if, if there were a concern that there was a cancer cluster or other disease in this part of the town, it would have to be sort of, what is the root of exposure? And most common one is, is you're either drinking water or your, whatever you're eating or your, or your personal habits, whether smoking, drug use, what have you, have a bigger impact on sort of the health of, of people than maybe the, than strictly environmental exposure. So I look at this, the locations being pretty small. And I don't, I don't know the connection between the aquifer protection district and the, where the water supply is with respect to the aquifer, aquifer protection district in this part of town. But it's a pretty, it's a very small site and it's not making a, if I was to tell you a huge contribution to groundwater contamination. It's very focused in one part of the site.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike. Jerry, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I do. You know, reading the, the reports from the environmentalists just did not, did not fill me with a great deal of confidence, especially when they mentioned that the electroplating company in the 60s and the 70s, they discharged electroplating waste to the adjoining wetlands. I mean, and I know back a number of years ago, they removed some of the soil, but I mean, 20 years of dumping heavy metals? It just, it, it, it just strikes me as, as a real, a real problem. And also in the map, it shows a former stockpiled soil. I mean, what, what soil was stockpiled? Was that the soil that they contaminated?
So I think I need a correction on this and I don't know if TJ or, or Tim can correct this. I don't believe there was dumping from the site. I believe the contamination took place from a fire. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That was the biggest source, because when the, the place, when the place burned, the fire department, you know, their goal is put the fire out. So they just used a ton of water to, to put the fire and that rinsed a lot of the plating baths and plating solutions out of the building and into the wetland to the east of the building. So there may have been some discharges of some treated water, I don't know that for sure. But the biggest source of contamination was the fire and all the water that was used to, to put the fire out, resulting in all the plating baths and solutions getting washed into the wetlands.
Well, what I quoted is from this report and I'm quoting, and it's, it doesn't talk about the fire being contaminated. It says, quote, "Circle finishing discharge electroplating waste to an adjoining wetland in the 1960s and 70s until the waste was redirected to the onsite treatment system." So that's 20 years of, of waste from the metal plating facility.
But, but there was a lot of, after the fire, and that was what caused there to be, you know, attention on the property. And there was, there's a substantial amount of investigation into the wetlands with multiple rounds of sediment sampling, surface water sampling, sampling off property, sampling downstream of the wetland. So there's actually, unfortunately, there's been a ton of study of this since the, since the fire began, since the fire back, you know, 30 years ago. And so, and it's hard to find a singular document that sort of puts it all into perspective. Where you can read and go, okay, I understand exactly what happened. I found myself going back to earlier documents to try to understand what exactly happened and what was, what was the nature of the investigations done to assess the extent of contamination in the wetland. And there was a lot of it done by AECOM and others. So there is a long history, it does take a while to wade through all of it to get to understanding what's going, what's, what was completed and what conditions are now.
And now, the other thing, all of these, the tests that has been done, it's done on the empty lot without any kind of development. I mean, what is, what is the development where you put, where you put condos? You know, how does that change all of these tests that you've done? I mean, how is it, you know, people are now testing for radon and, I mean, this is being, being built over soil that had been dumped.
Well, you know, interestingly though, you know, as I look at the data, you know, the biggest area that was affected was a wetland. And there was a substantial amount of work done investigating, cleaning that wetland up. The other, the other releases were from former like fuel oil underground storage tanks. And those were remediated as well. So there were excavations done in years past when the property was vacant to remove contaminated soil. Some of the mounds may have just been from test pitting where someone does it, you know, they dig a trench to see what the soils look like and they didn't put the dirt back. So there's been a fair amount of investigation to get the site to where it is now. And it, you know, from my perspective as a licensed type professional, as long as there are considerations taken, taken into account during development, like, okay, if there is excess soil that can't be reused, because for whatever reason, whether it be not structurally sound or what have you, it's clay, they can't build on it, that it be managed appropriately, meaning if it is contaminated, it goes to a place that can accept it. And also that, that the structure's built such that it doesn't put residents or patrons at risk for exposures to contaminants that are in underlying groundwater or soil. I think those considerations have been taken into account for this design to make sure that the, you know, the, the folks that are gonna be there are protected. Again, so when I look in risk, my mantra is where there is no exposure, there is no risk. So if the property is paved, building is raised off the grade, there's no chance for radon to get into the building or other gases to get into the building. There's no exposure, so there can't, there won't be a risk to employees or inhabitants.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. JR Colby, do you have any questions?
None at this time.
Okay, I actually have one. You mentioned that, that the city of Newbury Port wants you to do a test pit. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit? What is that for?
I'm sorry, that was actually, Newbury's planning, third-party review wants to just confirm the soils in the rain garden.
Okay. So, and that was my first question. My second question is, if, if the select board approves this special permit and allows us to move forward, what, if there's, if, what if any substantial change of the plans, do you foresee that would affect that permit? And maybe this is a question for Martha. You know, like what, what, not guarantee, but what assurance can the board have that this, once they approve it, that they don't get out there and start doing some work and something changes and it's gonna affect it different, differently?
I would say if that's directed to me, I would say there could be some conditions placed in, in the decision that, that might require some action if that turns out to be the case.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments from my board before I open it up to the public? Jeff?
I think what Martha said, at least for me, as things go forward, and even after they're built, if there's the ability to condition our approval on the fact that there's testing done periodically, I could feel a lot better about that.
I can talk to that for, in a moment, just briefly, sorry to interrupt, I apologize. One of the obligations, so right now, the lingering issue at this property is some elevated chlorinated volatile organic compounds, like solvents in groundwater in the southwestern corner of the property. So there's, so there's an obligation that every six months, groundwater samples be collected from that portion of the property and that information be reported to Mass DEP semi-annually until such time as a permanent solution is achieved. So there, they, the property owner is obliged to carry on with that sampling program to, to demonstrate to DEP that things are getting better, things are not getting worse. And then until such time as they can file or claim that they've achieved a permanent solution. So the good news about having this environmental issue is there are definitely strings attached to the property that obligate the property owner to continue to do this monitoring until such time as a permanent solution is achieved.
So I have a question on that. Would this, would this project, or it's going to, I almost see it as, I know you can't do anything with the wetlands, but I almost see it like, like a capped landfill, like you're capping the soil of the site, would that make, pave the way for a permanent solution?
Not really. So right now, I believe that the lingering issue is that there's still some lingering groundwater contamination present there that has, that needs to be addressed with time. And, I mean, there will be a cap because it'll be pavements and it's not like it's being capped, not because we're capping it, but because we need pavements for parking. And as I understand it, at least a portion of the building, like, that will be, where people will be living is gonna be above the ground surface, above grade. So therefore, they'll be protected from vapor intrusion, which everyone's, it's a real, it's been pretty popular buzzword for the last 10 years, is if there are contaminants in groundwater that are volatile, that they can make their way up through the soil column and find their way into a building, just like radon does. And then people could be exposed to that chemical via indoor air. As I understand it, there'll be provisions to prevent that from happening with the design of the building, so that there's protections in place for inhabitants. So I don't know that there's any, there's no active plans to sort of do further remediation, to the best of my knowledge. Again, I'm not the LSP or licensed type professional of record. I am, I am an LSP, but I'm not the LSP who's been tasked with designing a way of getting the site closed out. I don't know if I answered your question directly or not, but that's my, I hope I did.
Thank you. Jerry, did I see your, your hand up?
When you, when you talked about a, a permanent solution, and that's to the problem of the groundwater contamination, right?
Correct.
And, and after all this study, why is it, why is it there is still this existing problem?
It's a great question. I think two, there's two parts to it. One is, it's difficult to clean up chlorinated volatile organic compounds that are in groundwater. They're, they don't respond very well to biomediation without a lot of help. And there aren't many other good methods that are, are entirely effective and more importantly, cost-effective. So I think, I think one of the bigger challenges, and I'm just, this is my conjecture, is that because the property's been vacant and I don't know that circle finishing has some of the wherewithal financially to sort of invest more into remediating groundwater, I think it's basically a dollars and cents thing for them, given there's no active operation there. So I don't think that there's money's available to facilitate remediation further. Again, I'm not their LSP, I don't know that for fact, but that's my, that would be my understanding.
Thank you.
So would the tincture of time help the groundwater heal, for lack of a better word?
It, 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 it does, it just takes a long time.
Well, can you give me a rough idea what a long time is, like 100 years, 1,000 years?
Yeah, decades.
Decades.
Yeah, correct. I mean, I, I've worked at sites that, you know, in urban areas where we have these same kinds of chemicals at depth in bedrock. And fortunately, you know, the drink, the water that's in the bedrock is not being used for drinking water, there are no potable wells. So there's not an exposure to the public, but to DEP's credit, they've said, look, we're going, we can only allow a maximum amount of contamination to our groundwaters, regardless of whether or not there is a risk to human health today. They want provisions in place so that those kinds of sites don't get ignored. So we have those sites where there's deep contamination, it's, we can't get cleanup chemicals to the contamination because it's in fractured rock, which is very fine fractures. And so we basically like left with, we can't really do much with this. It's not posing a risk today or tomorrow, but we're obliged to monitor it to make sure it doesn't end up somewhere, somewhere where it could cause harm. I think it's similar here because of that same kind of contamination. But here, the levels are much, much lower than I've seen the other sites.
So is it your professional opinion that the work that needs to be done to the site to create this project is going to further harm the groundwater?
I don't think so, not at all. I don't think so. I think, again, I think it'll actually make improvements to some of the groundwater quality as it pertains to some of this, low levels of petroleum remaining are right around the groundwater table.
Okay, that was my understanding that we came away from it last time.
Right.
Jeff Walker?
This is my last question, and you've actually answered a lot of our questions, or at least mine. What I'd like to feel assured about listening conceptually to everything, I guess my fear all along has been, we have a site that has some pavement or whatever, some, and, you know, but it is filtering some water, you know, it's percolating some water at a certain rate. And I guess what I'm worried about is you're gonna pave stuff and you're gonna have roofs and you're gonna shunt all that water to a certain location without any tanks to hold it and sequence the, the release into the wetlands. And I'm just kind of afraid, can that water cause that contaminated wetlands to be more mobile and to go further towards our aquifers, which are all deep and below the clay? So there's probably not a lot of risk. That's kind of my question in a summation.
Yeah, so yeah, for the environment, I haven't looked at what the discharge might be to the wetland. I'd have to go back in and sort of see what was left behind. I, I recall there was a fair amount of sediment removal in the wetland, but I can't, I can't get you there from here because I just don't know offhand. So I let TJ speak to the, the capacity issue.
Yeah, so just, just to, to mention, the basin itself actually doesn't discharge directly to the wetlands. It's designed so everything does get into the ground, so there's no direct overflow to the wetland.
Thank you.
Say that one more time.
So, so the basin is designed so it will fill up with water and just drain down into the ground. There's no outlet structure or overflow that is directing water directly into the wetland over the surface. Everything will be, will be into the bottom of the basin.
So no direct discharge to the wetland? So no direct discharge to the wetland?
Infiltrate, is what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
That's the way it's designed. Okay, any other questions from anyone of the board members? All right, seeing none. I'm going to invite, invite any members of the public to comment or ask questions, please, using the raise hand function. TJ, if you could just keep that up for, until-
Oh, okay, I was actually going to ask you if you want me to close it.
Yeah, no, I think you should keep it up for now. I'm going to ask Tracy or Martha if you could monitor any raised hands.
It's actually harder to do that with the, the-
There we go.
I do not see any raised-
Neither do I.
Okay. So seeing none, I just want to note for the record that we have the receipt of a letter from Creed, Creedery-
Creedery.
Yeah, so the Italian in me. Creedery Associates LLC dated January 29th, 2021, submitted by the applicant's engineer. And we have the receipt of the peer engineering review letter from Joe Swarda dated January 23rd, 2021. We have not received any emails or other written correspondence from the public regarding this project to read into the record. Do I have any follow-up comments or questions from the Select Board?
Yes, I do.
Jerry?
Yes, the peer review by this Joseph Siewetka. Was he retained by Newburyport? Is he the independent third part, is he an independent third party?
He is actually retained by the town of Newbury. He's helping the planning board with the peer review of the project. Their site plan approval, is that correct, Martha?
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other follow-up comments or questions? Okay, so I'd like to review the findings that the Select Board needs to make in order to grant the water special permit overlay district, special permit, is that, what does WSPOD stand for? Water-
Water Supply Protection-
Supply Protection Overlay District, sorry, Special Permit. So in accordance with Section 97-4B5C, the board must find that the proposed development at 3 Newburyport Turnpike, A, will in no way during construction or thereafter adversely affect the existing or potential water quality, quantity of water, quality or quantity of water that is available in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, and B, is designed to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils, topography, drainage, vegetation, and other water-related natural characteristics of the site to be developed. So those are our two findings that we have to find. I'd like to get a sense from the board of what your thoughts are. Do you think there's enough information here that we can, we can make those findings? I'm going to go through, I guess I'm going to ask Mike Doyle.
I personally am not comfortable voting tonight until I find out.
No, we won't be voting tonight.
Okay, good, okay, so that's, that's good to know. So like I said, I've, I've got some more issues about what I, what I uncovered this weekend, and it, it was staggering from what I heard. I haven't verified the truth of all of it, but it's like, I'm going to do some digging.
Okay, so you're, it sounds to me like you're still undecided.
Yes.
Okay, how about Jeff Walker?
We're not voting tonight anyway, so, you know, I concur with Mike, I can think about it.
And Jerry Heavy?
Yeah, I, I concur with the two select members. And also, there's a mention in one of the reports about conditionally doing larger test borings and, and whatnot, so we, you know, and make, make approval conditional? What are the conditions people are looking for? So I'd like more information on that.
That would be up to our discussion. We can condition in any way we like. And Chairman Colby?
All my questions have been answered up to this point.
Okay, so you feel as if you could, you think that you, you, all your questions are answered, you don't have anything else left hanging out there?
No, no, all my questions have been answered up to this point, I think. I'm comfortable with the project. It seems like precautions have been taken, and, you know, brownfields and damaged lands like that are exactly where development like this should be occurring. So I'm, I'm ready to move on this, at this point.
Okay, so I'm going to ask TJ-
Can I just say one quick thing?
Please.
If we're going to take a straw vote or whatever we're going to do, but, you know, when we come back in for the vote, if Tim and, and MEI have kind of listened, if they can just add a couple of things that would make us a little more, if they could just tie a few loose ends up, I think it could make a, a big, you know, do a lot of good to how we feel.
Well, I think maybe that-
Once, everyone's pretty close to wanting something there, to wanting a development, to want it to be better than it is. It's just a couple of things that seem to be, I guess it's maybe lack of, you know, seeing what a rain garden, I don't know, but if, if someone can just clean up a lot of loose ends, it would go a long way, and, you know, before we vote.
So I'm going to ask TJ Melvin, do you anticipate submitting anything further to us, to the board at all? Materials or information?
At this point, I mean, we, we do have some minor modifications, just as far as like DPS comments of the hydrant location, but nothing substantial at this point. And even with the planning board, I know we have some work to do with the architecture of the building, but we're not anticipating any site changes at this point.
TJ, can I ask you a question, and it can be answered by Martha? The Concom and basically, have, have they seen like the rain garden design, and did they okay that rain garden design?
Yes.
I mean, guys, that's, that's one thing we got to think of too. You know, our Concom, who's done a good job at a lot of things, thinks that the design is sufficient for the project, so we got to think of it that way. Like, you know, JR just almost articulated, so.
It also, just to add to the, the planning board's third-party review, has also generally agreed with that the design works, and it's, really, I believe we've resolved all those questions.
Well, that's our board on things like that, and also an engineer, so, you know, we're, we're also getting into things, we're trying to protect the water, but we're getting into things we don't really know all about, you know?
And that's kind of where I'm going with this. I think that we need to maybe, and I'll ask the board if they feel as if we should close the public hearing at this point, and then set a, another date on an agenda to actually discuss how we want to move forward with this, if we want to condition it, if we, you know, if we're dead set against it, if we, you know, deliberate on it. I don't think we're there yet tonight. I think that Mike wants to do a little more thinking, I think Jeff does, and I think Jerry does too. Correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm putting words in your mouth, but, is there anything I'm going to ask my board, and I'll go through one at a time. Is there anything in particular that you would like TJ or Tim to provide to you that will, that hasn't already been provided, that will aid you in making your decision? So I'll start with you, Jeff.
I didn't see where there was any monitoring during the construction and afterwards to, to check what's going on, except in the southern end. If there's some monitoring out where the rain gardens are, I'm fine.
Tim, you making a scratch note? How about you, Mike?
I just want, I'm going to check with the, the state, the board of our local board of health, and I'm going to check with the state to find out if anything's been recorded, you know, they, they have studies that do hot zones. I want to see if anything showed up at all, just before I vote.
Okay, no, no, that's okay, but is there anything that Tim-
No, no, there's nothing he can do right now until I do some digging myself.
Okay, but remember, what, this is only, this is a focused-
Right, but-
Oh, on the water protection.
This is water.
Yeah.
That I'm more concerned about.
Yeah, all right. And Jerry, how about you? Do you have any, any-
Yeah, are they, are they, are they going to do any deeper test pits in the area of the bio-retention prior to any of the site work? Are there going to be deeper test pits? Because they, I think they only went down four feet.
TJ, can you answer that now?
Yep. So, a, as I mentioned, the, the planning board's third-party review wants us to do a test, but just to confirm soils. I don't know how deep he wants to go. We are very close to the wetlands, so we're assuming that it's just going to be filled with water very quickly. And it just doesn't, you know, there's no benefit at some point once the hole just keeps filling in with water. But I anticipate at most we'd be going 10 feet, generally what the, the deepest a normal machine can get.
Thank you.
That's it, Jerry? JR, I don't think you have any comments or to-dos, do you, do you?
No, not at this time, no.
Okay. So since we're still going to take some information in, I'm hesitant to close the public hearing. So I guess I'm going to move to continue the public hearing?
Take a motion to continue the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Okay. Do we want to move it to our next meeting on February 22nd? Or when is it going to be before the planning board again, Martha?
It's actually coming back before us on March 17th.
Do we want to push it to after it meets to the planning, after they, they go before the planning board next?
That, that seems to be a good thing.
Yeah, not a bad idea.
So our second meeting in March, what do we have?
That'd be March 23rd would be our second Select Board meeting.
March 23rd. Tracy, do we, do you know?
That's one-
That budget?
That's one of the dates, that's, the, the two meetings in March, you haven't said it yet, but generally you hold a joint meeting with the finance committee?
So how about if we, if we move it to the first meeting in April?
That's, that's quite a ways away.
Do we want to have a special meeting just for this?
Why can't we have it on the, the, the one with finance? I mean, we can have a, like, set at 6:30, and then like, and then the finance can come on at 7:00. I mean, I-
Okay.
That works for me.
So March 23rd, 6:30 PM?
Yep, 6:30 works for me.
Everybody else good with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to March 23rd to 2021 at 6:30 PM.
Motion to move the meeting.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Geraldine Heavy?
Yes.
JR Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Okay, thank you, TJ.
Thank you all.
And Tim, we'll see you on March 23rd. Okay, so going back to our agenda, I did want to bring the Triton discussion up, rather than continue down this through the agenda. I just want to move that one agenda item to next, to the next item on the agenda, and then we'll continue through the agenda as it is written, so. We've received a couple of letters, several letters regarding the Triton Remote Learning Model. We have the, all the letters, quite frankly, have been to send the kids back to school. We really haven't received anything that says the kids should stay home. So, I just want to make it clear that the school committee is a separately duly-elected board or committee that we, the Select Board, has no oversight of. We can't direct the school committee to do anything. The school committee cannot direct us to do anything. I just want to make that clear. But I'm going to open this up to the board, to our board members for discussion.
Alicia, am I missing something? Is this on the agenda?
Yeah, it is, but I jumped around JR.
Where is it on the agenda?
It's right before John Lucy's update, Emergency Management Director update, discussion around Triton Remote Learning Model.
I'm big too.
Yeah.
I got it.
I'm just going to pull that up and have this-
Okay.
First. So, does anybody want to start the conversation off?
I'll start. If that's okay, Alicia. I've had a lot of feedback about this, and a lot of it's because of my age, also a parent of a school-aged child. I don't know what the answers are. I know the school committee, our members, we have great school committee members, they're in an extremely difficult position. What's, but we've been at this for about a year now, and for families of school-aged children, what it boils down to is some people can afford to do this and some people can't, and some of the kids take to the online learning and some don't. So the, the problems are twofold. Our failure rates are going up, the kids are becoming less engaged, a lot of them with the online learning. Socially, I see them suffering. On a financial point of view, if you're a young family and both parents have to work, this is, it's made it impossible to schedule. The, the, you know, they're on again, they're off again. There's a half day, but it's a snow delay, so they, they have in-person schooling for two hours. It's, if you have two working parents, it's an impossible situation. I really fear for a lot of the younger people in town, because if you get one, you know, all of a sudden you get half of the income, you add COVID to that, uncertainty in the workplace, and we have all kinds of problems here. And I'm not going to act like I know what the answers are, I don't, but I think that the time has come. A lot of people are really pushing for the kids to go back, and if for some reason, health experts tell me that we can't, then maybe a lot of the problems lie in the scheduling, and somehow altogether, we need to figure out how to make the schedule a regular thing, so we have two parents that can work. And that's basically the way I'm looking at it right now, and I've, you know, I wanted to bring this up tonight. It's not an easy discussion to have, this, a lot of unknowns, but we also have a year worth of experience under our belt too. So I would open it up to comments from any of the rest of the board.
Thank you, JR. Anyone else on my board have a comment? Jerry?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, unlike JR, I, I have, I have no dog in the race. My, my daughter is all grown up out of school, so I, I'm not dealing with this issue, and I feel for the parents who do, especially the women who have to give up their, their jobs because they don't have daycare. But as you said, Alicia, the school committee is an independent board, and I'm going to, I'm going to trust their judgment, and they're the ones who, who have the expertise, and they have the experts, and, you know, who can educate them as to what is the best thing to do. I know the CDC this week, they, they had changed their position on whether or not children can go back to school, or, you know, with or without vaccination, so there are a lot of different facts out there, and, and I, I would trust the input of the school committee. That's, that's why they were voted in. So, and, you know, I, I just think it's a difficult position for all, all parents and all of the kids, and it, it's, it is a shame, and hopefully once this year is over, we'll never have to revisit it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, I saw your hand up.
I've really been on a lot of the school committee meetings, and I've witnessed in the beginning, when we were getting a handle on COVID, you know, there was a push, really strong push, to get kids back to school. And Brian has really stayed, you know, to that movement, but, you know, as things- you know, to that movement, but, you know, as things became more complicated, what I learned by being on the meetings is we do have a high-risk population that is in school, you know, five days a week or four days a week now, and that's the kids that need a little extra help. And one of the things that was very worrisome to the school committee was if everyone came back and a lot of people get sick, would it really cause those really at-risk kids to lose the ability to go to school too? So it's complicated. I have a grandson that's not doing that well with online learning, and I know I wouldn't do well with online learning, but listen to what Jerry said. I think the board has struggled with, and I think they've done the best they can. At a certain point, I think they really have to go back and just see how it works. But I give it a try, and if, and if there's a lot of cases, they can go back to remote again.
Thank you, Jeff. Mike?
Same, it's the same. It's, it's a terrible situation for all, but we, and personally, I think we gotta get the schools open. We, but once again, I, I called JR when I saw this on the agenda Friday, says, we have no, we have no control over this at all. It's school, school committee. But I can, I can give my support to those people. I feel ya. When I heard the, the, how high the failure rate had gotten to a Triton, it scared the hell out of me. I mean, I, I was, I was a special ed, a professional of it for six years, less than two years ago, and I mean, that's, that's staggering numbers. And the fact that I, I did what Mary said today, today, her opening comments at the beginning of the meeting, the percentage of, I didn't realize how many people left Triton. I didn't realize, I mean, th- these are big things that I'm not comfortable with keeping that school closed, so that's my, my piece.
Mike, I hope they don't have MCAS this year.
I'm telling.
So to prepare for this discussion, I did, I did reach out to the, to the superintendent and also to one school committee member, the, the longest-serving school committee member in that, that Newbury has, and I asked her, you know, what is holding you back from going back to school? And the, the biggest thing, Maureen said it to me, and Brian said it to me as well, is this six-foot social distancing. They can't get all the kids back into the school. There's physically no way to get them all back into school, as long as they have to keep them all six feet apart. So that being said, the CDC is supposed to be coming out with some new guidance tomorrow, and until they change that guidance, I don't see how these kids can go back to school, and it breaks my heart, because I know what it's like to have a child that has a lost year. I've lived it, and these kids are all having a lost year. They're, and it's going to be, the ramifications of what's yet to come are, are, is going to be overwhelming to these kids, and the school is aware of that. I know when I sat through the last budget discussions, they were talking about putting money into remediation, because they have to, because they have, this is going to be a lost year, and it's not unique to Triton. It's, it's, it's across the whole, not only the whole Commonwealth, but it's across pretty much the whole country. I am participating in a meeting tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 PM. The MMA has scheduled a, a fiscal policy committee Q and A section. I'm just gonna go back and get the, I gotta get the note as to who is going to be attending, but it's, it's about the fiscal impacts of, of what's going to, of what the monies, the federal monies that are coming, are coming in. Let me see, I'll tell you who's going to be attending. So this is the governor's budget and school finance staff on federal revenues available to municipalities and school districts to help fund local school budgets and on school finance provisions in H1. It's a Q and A session starting tomorrow at 4:00, 4:00 PM. Presenters from the Executive Office for Administration and Finance, Division of Local Services, Executive Office of Education, and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will discuss the various streams of federal funding that directly impact municipal and school operations. Notably, this will include a discussion of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, also known as ESSER, E-S-S-E-R, and its impact on Chapter 70, required local contributions. Additionally, the presenters will identify the other various streams of available federal funding, outlining the allowable uses of the funding, highlight when funding authorizations expire, and clarify what happens if the funding isn't utilized in its entirety. Then it gives a list of everybody that's going to be on the call. I can submit questions. I plan to submit a question before this, tomorrow's meeting, and one of the questions I'm going to ask is how, how does the Commonwealth plan to set up a framework to get these kids back into school with this six-foot distancing? I want to know that question, because this is not unique to us. This has a tremendous impact on, on our school funding if we have to, if the, if the federal government doesn't give us the monies to do what we need to do to educate our kids. The town, we just do, we just don't have it, and the state's going to have to kick it in, or if the federal government doesn't, but they're going to have to do something, because to have another year like this, to me, is totally unacceptable. And so that's what I plan to do. I don't know how. I mean, maybe they could have the kids outside. I mean, who knows? They did it in kindergarten, so when the spring weather comes, you know, everybody, or even, you know, whatever, they have to start thinking outside the box and getting the kids back in school. But that's, that's my comments. Mike?
Just one, back in 70, before Triton was, 71 before Triton was done, I was the last good, we all went to Newbury Point High, and the classes were so big, they, they had double sessions. I mean, we, so I'm not sure if something, it's something we could lower the amount of kids in the school by double sessions, but it's gets them back to school on a regular basis, and granted, it only might be for a period of time, but you know, get them back to school, get them in learning back again, and it's like, and we'll deal, like I said, once the vaccine takes effect, maybe next year, this will be a dead topic, but right now, we got a problem.
Well, the vaccine's not tested in children yet, so that's not going to happen.
I think they're testing, I think they're testing it now.
Not in children. Jeff?
Alicia, one of the things that you just said too, from, you know, watching the meetings, that also goes to buses.
Yes.
So, Mike, it would be double sessions with busing, I mean, can you imagine six feet apart, how many kids you get on a bus, you know? It's tough. Logistics are tough.
But maybe they could put plastic partitions between them on each seat, then you don't have to do the six feet. There are answers that we haven't looked into deep enough yet.
Well, the federal government's going to have to provide funding, funding for that, so. That's kind of, that's where. Anybody else have any other comments? So I think, I think the public gets the angst of the board. We're with you, we understand, and you're not alone, but unfortunately, they're really, because we're limited at what, what we can do, and I've always believed that the solutions to our many issues at Triton, sit at the state level and with this pandemic is at the federal level, so I'm going to continue to fight on that end. Any other comments from my board? No? Okay, so seeing none, I'm gonna actually go back to the agenda as posted. So the next, the next thing, item on the agenda is the report of Chairman Colby. The PR 21-6 for Julie O'Brien and the PR 21-16 for the Select Board payroll, the chairman did sign those reports. Next, moving on to grants, gifts, and donations, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council Emergency COVID-19 Funding. Has this to do with the town? Is that a grant, Tracy, for $3,385.52?
Yes, that's the second round, round of grant funding received from MAPC for the local boards of health to help defray the cost of the public, public health nurses.
Great, thank you. We also received a Coastal Trails Coalition Grant in the amount of $10,000. We have a gift from an anonymous resident to be used towards the Central Street Basketball Court Project in the sum of $10,000. We also have a gift from the Triton Youth Basketball Group to be used towards the Central Street Basketball Court Project in the sum of $9,167.82. There's a little bit more money in there than what was posted onto the agenda. Can I get a motion to accept these grants and donations?
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
I believe Chairman Colby left. Alicia Greco, yes. New business. We have an annual town meeting. We'd like to schedule it on April 27th, 2021, at Triton Regional School District. Again. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion made to make the meeting on April 27th, 2021 at Triton.
Second? Second, okay. Discussion, is there any discussion around this?
I'm fine, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so the only one thing that I would like to say is depending upon the weather, I don't know if we can do it outside. I know we had to do it inside last year. But we can, that could be up for discussion later on as the date approaches. So all in favor, Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. We have a business license approval for Abigail Klarowski, DBA North Shore Acupuncture and Wellness, 65, Newbury Point, Turnpike, General Business Acupuncture and Wellness.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Can I get a motion to allow the vice chair to sign the business licenses?
Motion let the vice chair sign the business license.
Second.
All in favor, Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have an update from the Emergency Management Director, Chief Lucy.
How you doing, folks? Yeah, I have the, some, some better news for this report. As of February 2nd, the DPH report is indicating that Newbury has seen a decrease in positive cases, and this updated status of green has been designated to Newbury. We haven't seen green in a while, and that's, that's a good thing. Utilizing the 14-day look back, the DPH reports 1,045 tests were administered, of which 18 were positive. This is a 1.72% positive rate, which gives us that green status, and this is also a representation of a 72.5% reduction of positive cases since my last report to the board. Newbury is ready for administration of the vaccines for the 75-plus residents per the Phase 2 Part 1. We are facilitated, ready. We are just waiting for the vaccines. We're ready to go when they come. The regional, the regional distribution plan, it was very successful for Phase 1 recipients, and it'll be utilized for the next phase. It'll be held at the Page School in West Newbury. Once the vaccines are delivered, the clinic will be active every Saturday and Sunday, but we anticipate it'll be about three months, but it'll be for as long as necessary to get the distribution out to, to the recipients. It is also expected that notification of the clinic's delivery of the vaccine will be made. It'll be known to us by Friday or Monday, so it's, it's that imminent that we, we should be getting this and, and moving forward. Social media and the town's website will be continuously updated, so please monitor that frequently. It is expected that the clinic will be able to serve 500 residents per day once, when it's running, and access to registration via the, if the access, cer- certain residents don't have access through the web to register for receiving this vaccine, so it, it's recommended they call, dial 211. Then you're the, you can call in, and the registration will be done over the phone, and you're, and you'll be all set, and the date and times of your, of your appointment can be generated that way. So if you have issues getting online, there's, there's another answer to that. So again, just monitor the town's website. Our website will have the links on there, and that's when you get the most up-to-date information on that. Also, on Tuesday, February 16th, Town Hall will reopen to employees. The Town Hall will remain closed to the public and will continue business by appointment only for the public. That would be my report.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
The town administrator report is next.
Thank you. You may have noticed when you came into the meeting this evening, it was a little bit different. We have added a number of security measures so that we can avoid the recent rash of Zoom bombings that we've been experiencing in some of our meetings. So you entered a waiting room, other participants entered the waiting room, and Martha and Julie and I are going to share co-hosting duties so that we can get everyone moved in into the meeting as quickly as possible. Participants, both video and phone participants, will be asked to identify themselves in the future, and we'll rename them. Hyperlinks are no longer going to be provided on the website, so those who wish to participate and join our meetings will need to join the meeting by entering the meeting ID and then the pass code. And if by some chance we should have an interruption or Zoom bombing, the meeting would be immediately adjourned, and then we'd take, we'd move our business up to the next available meeting. The IT manager search is complete. An offer has been made, and Matthew Cooper will be joining our Newbury team beginning on March 3rd. He comes to us with extremely relevant municipal experience, and we're really excited to get him on board. Fiscal 2022 budget. The COVID seems to have pushed our budget proposals off to the side, but rest assured, we are working on it. I'll be seeking, you know, additional input from board members on any budget priorities from fiscal, for fiscal year 22 beyond what you have notified me of in the past, the tax burden stability, education funding, remain, you know, two top priorities, completion of adherence to the road improvement program that the DPW has worked so hard to accomplish over the last few years. Town Hall, Council on Aging, Building Solutions, with a continued annual appropriation from Free Cash, and Plum Island Safety Evacuation Route are some of the items that we've talked about in the past, but if there's anything you'd like to add on, you know, certainly would, would welcome that, and we've still got time to include it in the budget proposal. I did have an opportunity to present the preliminary budget numbers to the Finance Committee last week. We talked a lot about uncertainty and thought that was somewhat of an appropriate theme for our fiscal 2022 budget, especially as it relates to operating revenues, because that's where most of the uncertainty lies. In working on the second draft, we remain in a deficit position of about $165,000, but we're still in the early phase of budget development, and there are a lot of assumptions that will need to be revised before the final budget is ready for adoption. We'll have more information in early March, when we receive Triton's approved assessments, and more detailed information from Meyer, our insurance provider. I'm compiling the first draft of the warrant right now as well, and that will be before you for, for action in March. I did want to talk a little bit tonight about the transfer station, as it seems to be a very hot topic as of late. I thought that I'd provide a little bit of historical information that may be helpful, in particular for some of the newer select board members. I think the issue initially arose when I think the issue initially arose when, as a result of a four-day closure that we experienced due to the pandemic. I also want to be perfectly clear with everyone that working under an expired contract is by no means a best practice. And I'd absolutely rather have our agreement contractually bound, but there are indeed times when you simply need to be practical. And I think this is one of those instances. So a little history for the newer board members who were not here at the time. A review of the operation of the transfer station back around fiscal year 2012 indicated that there may have been some irregularities. I actually spent a few weeks physically working at the transfer station myself to learn how it operated and understand the way it functioned. There were indeed some inconsistencies, and it was apparent that the rules were not being adhered to at that time. So in working with the Board of Health, the Finance Committee, and the Board of Selectmen at the time, changes to the structure were considered, and we moved to a pay-as-you throw model, which was new. Mass DEP fully supported the move to that model and guided us through the transition. The Board of Health at the time worked very hard to secure a vendor to properly manage the transfer station, and the town contracted at that time with Gmail or Disposal Corp. Since then, they've proven to be a very reputable vendor, providing a service that benefits our residents at no cost to the town. At the expiration of the initial contract, the town proposed a new contract document. At that time, the recycling market had turned, and many other communities had begun charging fees for the disposal of recyclable materials. The Newbury Board of Health did not want residents to have to pay for recycling and did not allow Gmail or Disposal Corp. to charge for this service. As a result of the market uncertainties at that time, Gmail or Disposal did not wish to enter into another five-year contract with the town, but did agree to continue operating under the expired contract terms. That, at that point in time, that left the Board of Health with a couple of different options. They could try to entice another manager to the site, which would be difficult as it's a really small operation with very old equipment and never produced much of a profit. They could propose an override for the town to manage the facility or an override for curbside trash pickup, town-wide curbside trash pickup. They could have abandoned the transfer station, which would have required residents to contract independently with vendors or use other transfer stations. Or they could do what they ultimately chose to do, which was continue on with Gmail or Disposal Corp. absent a contract. And at that time, we all agreed to make the best of the situation and to continue working with what had proved to be a very good vendor who provided a valuable service at no cost to the town while maintaining free recycling for the residents. And, you know, here we are, three years later. So that's just a little historical perspective for anyone that's interested.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's very enlightening.
Okay. Council on Aging Space Needs Analysis, draft number one of the COA study was provided to the Expansion Committee for their consideration and comment. And the committee met last week to discuss the proposal, and will be working with the architect, or they're currently working with the architect who produced draft number two. Another issue that has come up is the Great Meadow lease. The Conservation Commission has before them the execution of an agricultural license for the conservation land known as the Great Meadow Farm. And although, again, this is another situation where many of us weren't around then, I understand that the initial lease began sometime around 1993. The Conservation Commission is authorized under a grant from the state to manage, maintain, and operate the property. And as such, they are charged with negotiating the agricultural license. Town Council has advised us, though, that the Conservation Commission can assign the license without a public bid process due to the low value of the agreement, that both the commission and I should execute the final document, and that the conservation agent will be the holder of the insurance certificates and will be responsible for ensuring compliance with all of the terms of the agreement. And that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Under old business, I see none. Under correspondence, we received a letter from James Stewart regarding the Plum Island Emergency Egress New Proposed Route. We have a notification of 13121 for the selfish closure for the Merrimack River. We have an update on the Plum Island MVP Action Grant. There was some correspondence regarding the village at Cricket Lane. It was a petition. Again, that's not something that the Select Board has any purview over, similar to the school committee, that's the ZBA, and that's something different. And actually, it's really not the ZBA, it's mass housing. The Select Board had written a letter when that project was before, first came before us, and we listed numerous reasons why we don't think this is a good location. And I don't believe, I know I personally still don't think it's a good location. We also received a letter from Mary and Vincent Anastasio, an email actually in favor of Triton in-person learning. We have received an email from Mass D O R regarding Triton and Whittier, both the excesses and deficiencies in their accounts. And we have some correspondence regarding the final 2020 equalized evaluations. Meeting updates, any meeting updates? I have some. So like I said, I'm going to attend tomorrow at 4 o'clock. There's, the MMA Fiscal Policy Committee is going to discuss the funds that are coming in and how they affect public education. And I am going to submit a question asking for a discussion regarding the six-foot social distancing required of the public schools. Whether they'll answer that question or pick it up, I'm not sure. Again, it's a fiscal, I'm going to try and pose a question in a fiscally manner, saying that, you know, based on this requirement, where's the money's going to come to propose this? So hopefully, I'll get it in. There's also a meeting tomorrow at 10:30 with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. During the recent storm, we received reports of significant flooding on Southern Boulevard on Plum Island. That's what this meeting tomorrow is about. It's, we're meeting with, I think, Martha, myself, the town administrator, and I think is the DPW going to be there? I'm not sure. Yeah, is going to have, we're going to-
And myself.
And Selectman Walker's going to be there to discuss a possible long-term solutions for that issue. We've got to be careful because, at least I personally, me, I don't want to do anything to that road that's going to create problems with those people that live along there. They've lived bad enough with the flooding as it is. I just would hate to see, to make matters worse. But we'll see what the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission has to say. The Rec Committee is going out to bid for the basketball court. They did, that was on the agenda tonight. They have some private donations to put towards that. I think bids are due back February 22, Tracy, is that correct?
18.
Oh, the 18th, sorry. And so hopefully, we'll get, we'll get a good bid on that and get that project going. Be a good reason for kids to do something outside, get them to move. And, oh, I do also want to say that the three towns, Newbury, Raleigh, and Salisbury, meet with the district at a, they're called District Communication Meetings. They're all publicly posted. We had one, I believe it was last week or the week before, on a Thursday night where we meet, and we met the Select Board members of Newbury, Raleigh, and Salisbury, Finance Committee members, and the district meet. And those meetings, I think they're recorded, and they're on the Triton website, so you can go back and you can see what the discussions were of that. And I think that's it. Next on the agenda is review of meeting minutes. So we have draft meeting minutes from 1:26:21.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Warrants, are there any warrants, Julie? Yeah? Okay, so could, I have a motion to allow the vice chair to sign the warrants?
Motion let the vice chair sign the warrants.
Is there a second? All those in favor, Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Executive session, none. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. All right, thank you for your time, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Take care.
Bye.
Good night.